Good evening, Byram Hills. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:54 PM so that the Board can go into executive session to discuss four matters. 2.1 Negotiations Matter VHTA, 2.2 Legal Matter Individual Student, 2.3 Contract Matter Individual Employee, and 2.4 Board of Education Matter Board Officers.
Second.
All those in favor? See you soon, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the March 4th, 2025 Board of Education Meeting. The Board went into executive session at 6:54 PM to discuss four matters. 2.1 Negotiations Matter VHTA, 2.2 Legal Matter Individual Student, 2.3 Contract Matter Individual Employee, and 2.4 Board of Education Matter Board Officers. So with that, can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any revisions tonight to the agenda? Nope, seeing none. We can move on to comments from the public. Any comments from the public? Seeing no one from the public here right now, we can move on to Consent Agenda 6.1, Personnel 7.1, CSE, Sub-CE, and CPSE Recommendations, and 8.1 Consent Agenda for Business. Can I have a motion to approve those various consent agenda items?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes, John McNamara, physical education teacher. He submitted his resignation to the purpose of retirement. I thought he was about 40. So I'm a little off. But John's been here a very long time and he is one of those people that you just can't understand how he can possibly retire. And not be here, you know? He's been like a part of the fabric of Comen Hill and on our coaching fields. And it's like, you know, he likes to have that.
He does do the kindergarten test, the Rock vote.
Oh, he's so good. He's so good. So more accolades to come for John, but I wanted to give him a little bit of recognition.
I think with that, we can move on to our two special reports.
Nope, we have to go back to one thing. We want to say thank you to Armonk Bobcat Baseball and the Armonk Baseball League for the contributions, substantial contributions to our baseball program, $45,000, and softball program, $17,882. And that is money that they give for our children to go for their spring training. So thank you so much to both of those organizations, which, you know, every single year they are spending a lot of time and energy to not only put kids through an organization that prepares them to be the athletes they are in high school. They continue even after the kids are no longer a part of that program to support those kids then in their next venture in the high school program. So thank you very much to both of those organizations. And now.
Thank you for your question. All right, so for Special Report Number One, do you want to start? Or Jim?
Yeah, you can jump right in.
Right, so thank you. Tonight, we have a special curriculum conversation. It's another State of the Department meeting. And we will be focusing this evening on science. So we're joined by our science chairperson, Deb Kay. So Deb will talk about the work of the Science Department this evening and talk about a visit by the Tri-State Consortium. So let me just give a brief overview what the Tri-State Consortium is. Tri-State Consortium is a group of high-performing school districts, about 58 of our districts. That was started around 1994 by our founding member of the Tri-State Consortium. And the purpose was to help districts like us that have high-performing students a way to help each other achieve, continue to grow continuously and to achieve high standards. So it's sort of a, they created a benchmarking system. So we do visits with each other in order to, along their benchmark assessment, they come in and they review various programs and give us feedback. We call this a critical friends group. So I've done visits, people in this room. I know Jen has done visits and Gina. We go to other districts. They come here and we help each other get better by just asking questions, exploring their programs. They have other services that they offer as well through study groups. Jen is part of the superintendent's study group. I have an assistant superintendent's study group. And sometimes they focus on topics such as performance assessments or MTSS or other areas that component districts like us say that we want to explore, some areas of need. So we've done visits in English and math and social studies, in music or language, and global scholars. And then this year, we had a visit in our Science Department. Deb spent the past two years putting together the evidence and working with her department on what we call a self-study. So Deb looks at various benchmarking indicators, which she'll review with you tonight, what those were. We asked the critical friends to come in and look at that information. She also designed an essential question with her teachers, which frames what we want them to focus on. And then in November this past fall, the team came in and reviewed the evidence that Deb and her teachers put together. And they review all the evidence and they meet with students, they meet with teachers, administrators, and parents. And then they do a fishbowl meeting with us where they ask us a bunch of questions and then give us feedback. They put together a report, which is in your packet, so you have a very detailed report. And tonight, Deb is going to summarize what is in that report, what the findings are, both in terms of what they are celebrating with our work and areas they think we can focus on. And then Deb will also talk about how that's impacting the work of the department and what the next steps will be over the next couple of years. So that'll guide us tonight. Feel free at any point to jump into the conversation and ask questions. This is meant to be a conversation. So if you have questions along the way, don't hesitate to jump in. And I'll get Deb's attention if, you know.
Great, thank you.
If I see you earning for a question there.
Thank you so much.
All right, Deb. So I'll have to put it up. Hang on. Go ahead and present to yourself.
Well, we're ready for the presentation. Next one, thank you evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I think tonight will be a great way for the Board of Education and the administration to celebrate all the support that you have provided, not only to Byram Hills, but to the Science Department specifically. I am extremely proud to be part of such a terrific department of really extremely dedicated and hardworking individuals. And we all know in the Science Department how fortunate we are to work with the students and families that we do. But we are also grateful for the tremendous support that we get from the Board of Education and the administration. So again, thank you for allowing me to present. The Tri-State Consortium is one of those support networks that Byram Hills is part of, as Dr. Kaltenegger mentioned. And it is one of the things that makes, I think, Byram Hills special, that we are always part of a think tank of some sort. And the Tri-State Consortium is one of those phenomenon. So the Tri-State Consortium met with us under the leadership of Dr. Lauren Allen, I would say probably approximately three years ago, and really started training us on how we should prepare for the Tri-State visit. We had known that we were due for a visit because we hadn't been evaluated yet. And we welcomed the opportunity because the amount of information that you learn from that assessment with the Tri-State Consortium, it's pretty amazing. And we had a great group of science professionals represented by the Tri-State Consortium come to visit Byram Hills, as Dr. Kaltenegger said, from district area of the Tri-State area. And it was a very, very impressive group of people to work with. And the questions that they asked us and the parents and the students, I think, provided them with the assessment that they gave to us.
We had a great team visiting us. These are volunteers from other districts. And we had administrators and teachers, science teachers, come to this team. And it was, they were a really sharp group that came in. And that always helps when you have really good thinkers that come in and help us do that.
So the Tri-State model consists of several indicators. We really focused on just two of the indicators, which you will see momentarily. But the framework itself requires us to choose indicators, but then also, as Dr. Kaltenegger said, frame an essential question. And then as we framed our essential question, we focused on the new science standards because we knew that that was work we were already doing. And it was work that was very important. And to make sure that we were prepared in that work, it just seemed to make sense. And sense-making is part of the new standards, to do something that was relevant and it was going to allow us to get feedback from a more objective set of eyes. So what we did was we framed an essential question using a book that we were participating in as a department book read called Ambitious Science Teaching. And all of the things that you're going to see in the essential question came from our work in implementing the new standards, but while doing so, focusing on best practices that we got from that particular book. We gathered evidence, as Dr. Kaltenegger said, through learning communities and department meetings and different trainings that we had because the district always provides us with a robust amount of professional development. And while doing that, we were able to really frame the essential question and then focus on gathering the evidence with particular emphasis on performance assessments and metacognition. And in doing that, the department provided evidence. But then we also had surveys, parent survey, student surveys, and teacher surveys. And then on top of that, we provided work in a website that we created and got a lot of great feedback. So in two years, the Tri-State Consortium will return and they will kind of engage with us to find out how we addressed their commendations, but more specifically their areas of focus that they provide to us.
That's part of the Tri-State model, is that they do a visit and they come back two years where we present the recommendations we took and what we've done since the previous visit. So it's sort of a way to hold us accountable for that work. But also, it's good learning for the team as well to come back. When I've done that, it's really great to go see how did that group address our feedback? So there's a lot of good learning. Both, it's a reciprocal relationship. We learn by doing visits and they learn from us as well.
Right, thanks. So this is a diagram that was taken directly from the State Education Department showing the implementation timeline of the new science standards, which are called NISLIS. They are typically called NGSS in the rest of the nation who are implementing them. But in New York, we have our own adopted version for a few reasons, which I won't get into. But right now, we are in the last phase of the implementation timeline, where this year we will be administering the new life science biology Regents exam and the earth and space science Regents exam. And along with those new exam administrations comes a whole host of, like, for example, in earth and space science, there's an implementation of the new reference table. And then along with the new Regents exams, they have a component to them where they have what are called investigations. So the investigations are, they're what the State Ed Department's way of making sure that students engage in what is known as a three-dimensional model. So it's mandatory that students experience the investigation. They are not things that count as part of their Regents grade. But like I said, it's the assurance that students are all having access to three-dimensional engagement. So what is three-dimensional engagement? It is the new framework that the new state standards are sort of designed around. And that, like I had mentioned, is how we design our essential question. So to what extent do Byram Hill students use the science and engineering practices, which is one dimension, and cross-cutting concepts, which is another dimension, to provide gapless explanations to real-world phenomenon? So real-world phenomenon is the main focus, where it's, where students are provided with something that's going to hook their interest and pique their curiosity, which is going to cause them to ask questions and wonder, which would then inspire a whole other type of learning sequences. So for example, when you look at the three dimensions, the cross-cutting concepts, I'll put up a visual for you, is how students think. And those are the different common themes that are standard throughout all different science content. So for example, if I were to just scroll through here, if you look at the cross-cutting concepts, which is green, patterns, cause and effect, scale, proportion, and quantity, systems, systems models, energy and matter, structure and function, and stability and change. So if you were ever in science classes or your students were, these are the common themes that really are interconnecting all the different science concepts. The science and engineering practices are the skills of how scientists and engineers do things. So those would be things like asking questions or defining problems. Students really are taught now the difference between what a scientist is, which is, that's how you get the answers to your questions, and what is an engineer? And they're going to design sort of solutions to problems. And those two things are different, but they really kind of are interconnected in many ways. So that is something that is new with the new approach. So those two dimensions added, or I should say woven together like that graphic right there, with the third dimension, which is the content, is the three dimensions. So that's the three-dimensional approach. So what is different and the shifts that are different is what we are focusing on in our implementation. And back in the middle school, quite some time ago, we started in sixth grade because when we projected forward, knowing when the first assessment for students in eighth grade was, which was last year, we had to make sure that those students had access to and understanding of these three dimensions. Now, it's not so important that the students know the three dimensions, but it's important that the students are challenged with phenomena and can make sense of these different science and engineering practices and cross-cutting concepts through the content that they are currently engaging with. So the new shift on assessments or things that we are doing in our practice, like performance-based assessments, which we'll talk a little bit more about, or reflections or different metacognitive activities, it's important for the students to be able to provide a gapless explanation. And that is what we'll look at when we go from sixth grade to seventh grade. There are things called progressions, where we are looking at how are the students leading the different expectations or benchmarks or what are now called PLDs or performance level descriptors at each one of those levels. So when we went back and started in sixth grade, that's what we were focusing on, is what is the assessment boundary for the standards at the end of all of those grade levels?
Yeah, if I could pause, because this took me a long time to understand the three dimensions. Deb talked to me about it for about 10 years. And then I finally was like, oh wait, I think I'm understanding. So if you think about starting a unit, you might start a unit, and let's say it's in weather. And you start with, we're going to look at a tornado. So that's the phenomenon. We might watch a video on tornadoes. So then as a teacher planning, you're going to think about, okay, what does the student need to know? What's that, what's the content and the disciplinary core idea? What do they need to know to understand how a tornado works and why it's caused and the impact it has and the forces upon it? What do they do with that? How do they analyze? How do they create investigations? How do they observe patterns? That's the do part. And then how do they think? And that's the part where the patterns, cause and effect, looking at systems. So it's those three pieces. The phenomena happens, the knowledge, they're doing something, and they're thinking about it. That's how it all connects. And it was when I sort of saw those three things together in an example that Deb shared with me, it started to come together for me. And so we're creating a structure where we can systematically do that in key ways across the grades in a consistent way.
Right, so thank you for that. And I will add to that. That entire phenomenon, no pun intended, is all designed within what you may hear of as a storyline. So another example might be like a teacher will throw up a picture of a big hole in the ground. And they will just do maybe a QFT, a question formulation technique, and say to the students, like, okay, just in a stream of consciousness, ask questions. And students will say, like, what is that? Is that from a bomb? Is that from a, you know, a meteorite? Is that from whatever? And inevitably, you know, you lead them to recognize that it's a sinkhole. And then sinkholes may be created, or sinkholes are created by, you know, caves that cave in. And that is in rocks that are sedimentary. And then they start learning about the rocks in that way, which is different than first you learn about sedimentary rocks. So you learn about hагиес rocks and you learn about metamorphic rocks. And then you might talk a little bit about a cave, but then you have to memorize like what a stalactite is or a stalagmite. And it was never interconnected. So now, by throwing it up there and piquing interest, and usually that's, like, the phenomenon itself is followed by an essential question. Like, they may, in a biology class, like they're doing right now to talk about evolution, they may be looking at, you know, how different mutations can form phenomenon like cancer and what's that mean? Or, you know, why do some antibiotics, you know, become not, you know, effective? And they're learning about things like that, but not just by memorizing and regurgitation. So that is what our Tri-State visit focused on, is how is our department doing this?
Right, so Deb, if you click a couple slides ahead then to those, now that we have those ideas in our head, to these slides. And talk about the shift now and where we're headed toward.
Okay, so there is a focus on the shifts. So we kind of described it, but the real shifts are that they're articulated. So in other words, they call them the conceptual shifts. And there's about six or seven of them. But what, you know, people in science education realize is that our students weren't, you know, graduating college or high school with the college and career readiness that we wanted them to. So that instigated this, this whole focus on not only maybe one state doing it well, but trying to create these standards so that it was done consistently across the nation. And that's where the next gen came. And you've seen these standards implemented in social studies and, you know, with the historical thinking skills and math. And so all this like common core-ish type of things, this is the science version. And the idea is to create that, you know, well-rounded student that's going to graduate with those 21st century skills. So the shifts from the old way to the new way are that we want to make sure that students are exposed to learning opportunities such as performance-based assessments that are designed in ways where there's an interdisciplinary or real-world connection. So the old way would have been, like I said, just, you know, having students memorize things or giving them a lab activity that they could do and then, you know, just seeing if they could draw a conclusion, which was write something down and then move on. Now, there's much bigger practical applications like the ones we just described.
Do you, do we have a question for you just about these, these changes? Do you think that it prepares students better for the ones that go on and take AP Biochem and Physics, where you're taking, well, maybe not physics, but where you're taking the Regents level first? Or are some of these changes almost like disconnected from the AP? And so it could just be different in terms of the learning style that the state's going down the road on versus the AP?
So I think that's an excellent question. And that's a question, I think that's like the million-dollar question that we all have because, you know, we haven't seen evidence of the new assessments in totality yet. However, they have launched clusters of sample questions. And the real key focus for any assessment is, which is what our focus is, is how do we know whether students are able to experience, but not only that, provide gapless explanations? So that is going to be the focus of answering what your question is, is do we think that students are going to be prepared for maybe like the AP level work? And the AP made this shift a while ago. And it was to more clean evidence reasoning. I think, you know, they call them the FRQs, the free response questions. But even the three-dimensional questions are more robust and three-dimensional. So to answer your question, one of the things the Tri-State's recommended was that we develop our own homegrown curriculum. And I think that to us was extremely liberating because we had been doing curriculum studies and we had been doing, you know, pilots with different curriculum that was out there and we still are doing that. And what we found is that there's a lot of great material from different places. But a lot of the creative exercises and a lot of the performance-based assessments that we're already doing, for example, like, you know, students exploring Newton's laws through the egg drop and then thinking about how they can use that to design cars' crumple zones and, you know, do forensic kind of accident analysis and learn forces that way. We found that we do, and it's not to sound like conceited, but we do things really well. And to feel like we have to be married to a canned curriculum with something that we didn't want to do, but we didn't have much of a choice because this is so new. And we needed some type of model, right?
Yeah, let me give an example of when we've talked about social studies, for example. And Jen Layton came in and did her State of the Department in social studies. She talked about the historical thinking skills. You've seen me share those with you. And Jen had worked with her department to implement those from sixth grade through 12th grade over time. And that's looking at, that was a shift in the state standards. And we since have had the new social studies Regents exams phased in over the past few years. So those are in place now. So that is similar to this in terms of focusing on how students think about content. And like the science and engineering practices and the cross-cutting concepts are about that. It's about how we think about the science content. Those things have been aligned to College Board. They've been making that shift over the past, probably about 10 years. They've been shifting their assessments as well. We're constantly getting updates on, We're constantly getting updates on, working with our AP teachers to update the new requirements from those College Board assessments.
Got it.
Yeah, so the AP has shifted to that type of higher-level thinking. I think New York is, this is part of their response to that, is more conceptual-based and focus on thinking habits as well.
So maybe a marriage, well, I guess the interesting question about New York, de-emphasizing, that's probably the right word, Regents tests.
With graduation measures.
Like going forward, it sort of begs the question, so then what does it mean if they roll out a new set of standards? And how do they even know that anybody's following those standards? They're not gonna know. And so on the one hand, one can argue, well, we're gonna do comparisons. But on the other hand, it actually gives you a little more flexibility if you have an approach that you think might be better than the state's approach, which I'm sure there are approaches that are better. And so so I guess the, we know that the AP tests seem to generally prepare students really well for college science.
Yeah.
So if this prepares students for APs, that even the ones that don't take APs will be successful in college science.
Exactly, yeah.
But if there's a disconnect between them, then I would like raise my hand and say, hmm, yeah, maybe.
I don't think there is. And I think, you know, as we look at these APs at the science level, I think they're, they've been moving in that direction as well at the AP, in terms of thinking skills. And from the studies we've done around what universities at freshman level are asking us to do with students, you know?
Can I also just piggyback on that question? Because I was thinking about about this too, and I know this is also the million-dollar question, right? Trying to support the department and the teachers in this push-pull, kind of like what you were saying of preparing for the exams and yet getting them to think like scientists. And what, so, you know, there were so many amazing commendations. This is obviously is such a strong department, and you're doing amazing work with all this. So I'm just curious about how you, how you can address that with the teachers and with the department to help them figure out how to deal with that tension of, we want them to be thinkers and use all of these cross-cutting concepts and, but also be prepared for the exams. So how can, what, how can we integrate all of that going forward? Is that a rhetorical question right now? I don't know, you know?
No, it's it's our work always. You know, if you think back a few years ago, when I was talking about our literacy initiative, it's the same type of thing. Let's study, let's dive in. Deb has been doing this for several years with her teachers. They've been looking at the next-generation science standards. Our teachers' mindsets are prepared. They, we have great teachers who, one, know their content really well, and that's step one as a teacher. If you know your content, okay, the rest we can work on. How we're gonna teach this a little bit differently toward focusing on thinking, focusing on phenomena in those types of pedagogical approaches? That's new, because we weren't trained that way. We were trained in more traditional approaches. Some of the traditional approaches we were trained in, that I do wanna say, are, there are some research-based strategies to, for example, direct instruction. There is, direct and explicit instruction is a necessary component of teaching, right? We can't just throw kids out, give them a phenomenon, and walk away. There's gonna be that initial, you know, sort of as a hook for students and get their minds activated. Do some direct instruction, get them to explore, come back, more direct instruction. And it's that iterative process. I don't think that's also new for our teachers. I think we've been focused on performance-based assessment and a student-centered environment for a long time. Some of this seems natural to our teachers. There's maybe a few shifts here and there. And I think what Deb will talk about as we get into the recommendations and her next steps is looking at this continuity from sixth grade through 12th grade and making sure there's that flow. You heard Jen Layden talk a lot about it with historical thinking skills. She spent a lot of time, took years for us to unpack those historical thinking skills and then develop continuity over time. She was very deliberate in that process. So now kids really grow in progressions. Deb talked about the progression of how this plays out from sixth grade to seventh to eighth and then through the high school. So that's gonna be the real challenge for us, is more the continuity piece. The mindset and the readiness and the content of our teachers, it's there. We have really strong teachers.
Thank you, thank you so much.
So I think I'll also add to that, you know, we started this work back in 2009, believe it or not, when we heard that the next-gen science standards were coming. So the standards document is a very robust and packed document. But because I think we started it so long ago, now the work that we're doing and continuing to do, it makes sense to the teachers. And in turn, it's just going, you know, it is already in the middle school and most of the high school. But even the teachers where they don't have Regents exams at the, like physics or, you know, some of the APs, they're still using this framework. So it's it's the way we do it. And I think that, you know, what we're working towards, and because we've we've received so much support in terms of professional development, back then, we had Dr. Helen Paschley come in and work with us on a regular basis. And she is, you know, she was the president of Stanis, which is the Science Teachers Association. So and then we worked with IDE Corp. And IDE Corp is something that gave us a lot of tools and pedagogical kind of frameworks that we use. One of them is the activity list, where now with technology, you can embed so many hyperlinks and and different types of phenomenon and pictures and, and, you know, extension activities. So students are constantly engaged. And then, you know, some students may work at a different pace through something. So students can then, you know, do an extension activity while one student is, you know, focusing on content that they might not have understood where other students already knew it. So that differentiated approach is something that I think is also part of this that is going to be more, I think, obvious and explicit. That might not have been in the, you know, rote memorization, regurgitation, to, you know, answer a multiple-choice question. So what is that gonna look like or what does it look like? That would parallel maybe historical thinking skills in social studies to give you a mental model, right? And that will be what would be known as a claims, evidence, reason statement. And that is something that is a framework that you're gonna see. And that is what the test questions that will be, assessment questions on the state's tests that students have to be trained in. So students have to know how to make evidence-based claims, because after all, that's what science truly is. But that's not, and that's what we kind of have been talking to students about all along. Science is an approach, it's really not a subject. The subject that you use that approach in or through is what the medium through which you use those practices or make those connections between the concepts, the cross-cutting concepts, is is just content. But it's the way that scientists and engineers do things that is really what science is. And that approach, I think, as we train students, is a foolproof approach, as we know, going through life. I think making claims based, I mean, evidence-based claims is certainly better than random opinions.
Right, why don't you give us a quick summary of the commendations in the report that the team saw? Because I think we got a lot of examples and feel for what the science is going to be like and sort of what it is and where we're headed in terms of those new standards, and then the recommendations, and then we'll talk about the next steps.
Sure. So the the tri-state consortium was very impressed and complimentary about the way that we tackled a visit during a time of so much transition in science education. And the teachers were really looking forward to, I think, having the visit and enjoyed it, because they felt that it was not only a celebration of their work, but it was a way for them to also get feedback from experts in the field about how are we doing with our implementation of the new process. So I think that it was nice to see that in the report, that it was recognizable. They noticed that we provide a wide range of learning experiences and also that there was a tremendous amount of support from the district to support the teachers in this transition. And it was obvious in the teachers' knowledge of the new standards and also the fact that students were using the terminology in the new standards. But, you know, it was visible all throughout the department, from sixth to 12th on the walls, through the exemplars and the work that they saw and in the conversations with students and in some cases, parents. There was a commendation about students and their ability to be reflective on science and engineering practices and the cross-cutting concepts. And there was a great amount of metacognitive examples in our authentic science research program. And I think that program and the way they do it in there speaks to what science is and in some cases, engineering. And that should be the exemplar in science of science and engineering practices, cross-cutting concepts at work through whatever disciplinary core this student project is focused on. So this quote was one that we felt kind of captured the essence of the celebration that the tri-state consortium provided us. And that the science department staff is skilled, reflective, and committed to continuous improvement. And the clarity and rigor of their work is recognized by students and parents. So that is taken right from the report, and we were.
Great pride in that.
Yeah, we we were really impressed that a group of strangers that only came in for three days was able to capture that, because that is what obviously we we feel. But we were glad to see that it was confirmed and articulated. And here is an example of an evidence-based claim of how the science department really inspires students to wanna think and act like scientists.
I was impressed by this. It sort of surprised me. New York State requires three credits, three courses in science at the high school level. And, you know, three-fourths of our students take one credit more than the requirement. Almost half, 42%, take five courses. Maybe 11% that takes seven science credits. It's pretty impressive.
So it's biochemistry, physics, and then it's earth science?
There's also science research.
Earth science.
Earth science.
And then it's things like environmental and some of the other.
Exactly right.
Got it.
Yep, all the other levels that might be.
But think about the three years of science research gone. That's on top, that's the seven credits.
Which one?
Science research on top of bio, that that's those are the seven credits.
That's three years of those, right.
And we also have students that, yeah, right.
Those are those students that take that, because they're interested in science. So they're taking rigorous courses on top of the science research project.
And we offer the FTS program, which we implemented about five years ago, where we recognize students who are electives, but electives with versatility. So they're half-year electives that students can take in addition to their science classes. So there are students that actually take a science core class, whether it be an AP or one of the Regents core classes. They take science research, and then on top of that, they're taking the FTS electives. So there are students that are really packing their schedules with different science classes.
This was notable, and the the team thought this was impressive, which tells me that they're not seeing the same thing in their districts. So that was impressive to me. They were, they were, they really focused on this, and you'll see that in the report.
I see it links back not only to the offerings, but to people that are teaching them.
Right, exactly.
You think about science research alone, how many kids are in science? I don't know if you know this number off the top of your head. How many kids?
I mean, it depends on.
Twenty to forty-eight years, is that though, right?
Twenty to forty-eight years, so if you have thirty on an average, those are thirty kids in a grade level of, of 160 kids who are taking more than one science for three years.
To the recovery.
Yeah, there's your seven.
Seven, I remember.
That's a lot.
That's impressive.
Yeah.
But the way science is being taught, I, people come up to me in town, and people really love our science department. They're in the hallways building bridges and building bungee cords, like who can, they're doing, they're, they're living it. They're, they're really touching and feeling it and excited about it, you know? And your, and your teachers are so respectful of the students, and the students have tremendous respect for our science program.
And that's why these shifts is not real challenging for us, and Deb talks about some of the areas to consider.
But we have seen the shift over the years.
Yeah, we have, we've been working on this for a while.
It's really a lot more, they learn a concept, but then they they live it, which is, it's incredible.
You know what I would say about science teachers in our school district? You know how, I always used to say, like, does every English teacher read? Are they readers, right? As an English teacher, does every, you know, is every science teacher a scientist, right? Like you ask those questions of every single department. Our science teachers are scientists. They are experimenting in their field, you know? If I go into, whether I'm going into Christine Pecora's class at the middle school and watching kids doing experiments in that class, or I'm seeing Dennis Covert and his crew, like hanging from some balcony, something's happening, right? Like they're.
Chopping nine-dollar eggs.
But they, they are, each and every one of them, in their own right, scientists. Like when I go into Steve Bornham's class and I'm watching him teach a class, I feel like I'm watching a scientist.
They eat, they're eating crickets, like they're getting the kids to eat crickets.
The other thing about science that's, at least at a high level, it seems to me, is that if you go to a college history department these days, I think it's pretty standard that there're gonna be many, many courses that don't have a test. And the days of of memorizing facts are over. I think when you go to the science department in some of these universities, that's not necessarily the case. There's much more of a, of a, a diversity of the courses that you have to take. And while some courses are gonna be very experiential and and all project-based, there're gonna be many courses that you have to get through that are hardcore, you know, three midterms and a final, you know, study until three in the morning-type tests. And so I think our students, when it's all said and done, need to sort of be prepared for both of the worlds. Of like the sort of new, more experiential, project-based world, but also that hardcore world, because that still exists. They haven't changed. I think organic chemistry is still organic chemistry in most places, like it doesn't change a lot, right? Yeah.
And that's why science, I think a lot of people don't realize that it's not a subject. It really is a bunch of practices and cross-cutting concepts. And the way that we have to organize it in some cases, that you have to have your disciplinary core that you're focusing on, be it earth and space science, you know, life science, biology, or the physical sciences. But these two other dimensions are are the focus. And I think that what what, one of the biggest shifts that I see, which I'm happy about, is that the practices and and the cross-cutting concepts have now been explicitly articulated. So and 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 not just in one classroom or one school district, across the entire broad world of science education. So you'll, you may hear things like the death of the scientific method. Because what people realize is that the scientific method was probably created so, you know, elementary kids can know the steps of how a scientist thinks and acts. But there was a lot of discrepant events that were occurring as a result of teaching it that way. So now we recognize that it's not a hypothesis, but it's a claim, right? And 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 how do you, you know, justify that claim is by finding evidence and making an evidence-based claim to provide a gapless explanation to a complex, real-world phenomenon. So it all makes sense.
And I think to Scott, your, to to your point, I think high schools have the challenge of balancing that.
Right.
It's balance. We have to give kids the 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 thinking strategies to be able to think about content and help them practice those thinking skills, but also practice taking a hard test without that being just the emphasis. It's a little bit of both, so that when they get to college, they can do that.
Yeah.
When, you may recall years ago, Lisa Pellegrino and Andrew Taylor did a study at the university level to explore what colleges were looking for in STEM education, particularly in technology. And they came back with one quote from a teacher of freshmen at a college level, I think it was in calculus. And they said, teach them how to think abstractly, and we'll teach them what to think about. And that sort of resonated a little bit with us. But you can't just do that in isolation. It has to be, you have to think about something. You have to think about content. And that's something I always say with like writing. You have, kids can learn to write, but they have to write about something.
Right.
So it's a little bit of the both, and that's what we're, we'll be grappling with as we do this work with the teachers.
Got it.
Deb, can you talk about what gapless explanations means, right?
Yes.
And and interestingly, what the tri-states asked about gapless explanations? Because I think that those are like the areas where you can start to think about how that manifests in a, in a department.
Yeah, thanks for kind of, you know, stabbing it back to where it needs to be. I think that, well, gapless explanation came from the book that we were reading called Ambitious Science Teaching. And it really kind of jumped out at us, because what we felt was an aha kind of way of saying, okay, this is what we want the students to know and be able to do. But the way that we will know that is that they can provide this evidence-based claim or this explanation to this complex phenomenon at the end of what's known as a storyline. So to Dr. Lamia's point, at each grade level, there are performance-level descriptors and assessment boundaries that we have to try to make sure that our rubrics match to measure our students' ability to provide gapless explanations. So on this rubric, which we will mimic the state ed departments, one through five performance-level descriptors on how students are able to do some of the various either skills or in some cases, it's their understanding of patterns and recognizing patterns and being able to describe them. Or in some cases, it is, are they able to design and, you know, carry out their own investigation? Where in the past, they may have just been given a step-by-step cookbook to follow, and we may have called that a lab. Now, students are presented with a phenomenon or a problem, and it's like, okay, so design and carry out your your own investigation and then come up with a gapless explanation. And if you're in sixth grade, that explanation is going to look much different to something than it would at the end of their senior year.
The team, the tri-state team really.
Struggled with it.
Struggled with it and really questioned us around that idea of gapless explanation. And does that.
Yeah, they were saying, is that what science is about? Is that there is no definitive answer, right?
Right, or are you seeking right and wrong answers? And it's gapless, and where is the opportunity for students to learn it?
It was a good conversation, though.
It was really, they really grappled with that a bit.
That's the beauty of tri-states again, like.
They really push their thinking, and they really try to understand what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
And what you'll see in the report, hopefully if you unpack it with detail, they did commend us about our essential question and using that gapless explanation, because what it did was it forced people to recognize, we're not expecting students to sort of transition theories into laws. You know, what we are is we want, we're not asking them to like, you know, explain something that hasn't been explained before. We're asking them to explain something at the level of the benchmark for the standards at their particular place. And the good part is that there's progressions through these standards. So the designers of of the standards did a great job making everything interconnected with all three dimensions, but also looking at what does it look like in, you know, pre-K, K all the way through, so that that's what we're going to be doing and tracking it. So a gapless explanation. So a gapless explanation um for, you know, a cross cutting concept in sixth grade is gonna look much different. And that's what we're gonna be tracking over time. And we do we did purchase on a program that's doing that for us. And it's a program called Inner Orbit where it um has questions that are designed in a three dimensional model. And it um what that means is a question um has to have all three of the dimensions in it. And um not every part of it, but in order to be a good question, it's testing content, the cross cutting concepts and science and engineering practices in some way. And this program is, you know, taking this data when teachers are using it at the different grade levels. So eventually, we will be able to not only track students as they grow across their grade, but we'll be able to track their skills and their knowledge um as they grow across um uh through the through the grades and eventually graduate. And that will give us a lot of data as um educators. So um where are we going from here? Um you could look quickly at um this, I think I, you know, everyone together during this conversation has pretty much.
Been come to these.
Have touched on these, yeah, yeah.
Disgustingly, but um.
Yeah, so why don't you get to where we're gonna go over the next couple of years and your goals, that'd be great.
Mm-hmm. Uh so.
Be mindful, the board's time, certainly if you have more questions, jump in.
Yeah, right. So what we recognized is that there was a lot of information, but in order for us to do it with deliberation and to do it well and and with the focus on what we believe is um important and department priorities, these are the areas that we decided to um commit to. And um what we have to do is we have to um focus on the difference between a performance task and a performance based assessment, and they are very different. The tri-state has a lot of good resources out there about what the difference is, but and we have to make it um department um you know, department wide. It can't just be sort of in little pockets where maybe now um performance assessments um to a certain extent are happening in in, you know, certain subjects more than others. And we're going to, you know, really focus on um designing these performance based assessments with these rubrics as I described before, looking for gapless explanations um according to the progressions over time. But it's going to be um systemic. And then I'm looking at strengthening the connection between science concepts and real life application. So um we are designing our own curriculum and we are creating storylines with phenomenon as the focus, so that each subject will um have its own group of storylines. And then that is how we're gonna make sure that students are learning to the depth that they need to, to prepare them for APs and other things. Um another good example of this would be, how would we differentiate earth and space science for students in eighth grade um who are taking accelerated earth science and um earth and space science on level? And then for those students that are taking it on level, the following year, they're going to be in ninth grade, taking earth and space science again. Well, it's not going to be monotonous and repetitive, because the phenomenon through which they're going to be learning is going to be different storylines. And therefore, it's um going to be learning the progressions at different levels. And it will allow us to dig deep into content, but not have to be repetitive or repeat it from one year to the next, even though it's earth and space science and earth and space science. So um I think, you know, develop ways in which students can grapple with unexpected results. I mean, this is I just the goal of school, right? So I think um we're going to work with our colleagues and come up with um also a lot of different interdisciplinary um projects, which we already do, but I think doing it more um so explicit and obvious to others. Another thing is um for the department to find ways to do outreach and educate parents more and the community more about um what these shifts are and how science education um is different now than it was maybe in the years past. So um the same thing, uh we were told about metacognition. I think sometimes um there was a focus on reflection, which was great. But reflection is only one aspect of metacognition. And it's important for us to really come up with our department definition and commit to what is metacognition? And then um try to make sure that we um, you know, give students metacognitive experiences, not just reflective experiences. And then um we already discussed the the rubrics, so that's something that we are um focusing on and it's um a work in progress. And um I think these are things that you heard me say, so I can empathize with all of you and I just wanna thank you for your voluntary services, members of the Board of Education, because I know that it's a thankless job. And in many cases, that phrase, no good deed goes unpunished, um rings true at times when you are here late at night, you know, listening to someone go on and on about science.
This was great.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
So much. Wonderful presentation.
Thank you for having us, but thanks for all your support.
Thank you, Deb. Thank you so much for your work.
We really, we really feel supported um by the Board of Education, the administration. And I I'm biased, which is one of the things we teach our students that you you're not supposed to have and you have to recognize that, that I'm biased that our science department is great. But one of the things we always talk about, and Dr. Beacon came back from um a conference that he was presenting at a few weeks ago, and he was all excited about it and he came to my office to tell me that it's really true what we say in our department. And I'm like, okay, so what is that? And for those of you that know Dr. Beacon, um you never know what he's gonna say. So remember how you always blushy say that um our department is great and our teachers are so good? Because it's not so much what we teach, but it's what we teach is the like the medium through which we develop relationships. And um he said, this came out in that conference that I was at, in that they did this study, so it had to be research based. And it was an evidence based claim that students are much more successful when they have high quality relationships with their teachers. So he came back telling me that that data was made explicit at this conference that he was at, presenting on Jupiter Notebook. And if you ever wanna know what that is, just give us a call and we can show you that, but I'm not gonna. So that evidence based claim was something that made us feel good, but I think it's definitely true. And I thank you for all the positive things that you've said about the department this evening, but also for your um continued support of our professional development and um just everything that we do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye, thanks, Deb. Okay, Kelly. All right, Kelly's gonna be very streamlined, streamlined.
I'm on, I'm on. Ten years it does it.
No, Pastor.
Thanks, excellent.
Good job, Kelly.
Hey, technology.
Okay, we're going to start with twenty five, twenty six administrations proposed budget. And we um had to have numerous meetings with the Finance Advisory Committee. Board of Education also had a budget workshop last week. Well, we've been working a lot on not only looking at our budget for twenty five, twenty six school year, but also looking at our budget over the next couple of years. Um we do have our budget development process with all of the dates involved. Um right now, March fourth, we're at the proposed budget. We have budget hearings two, three, four, a budget adoption, budget hearing five, and then the vote May twentieth, twenty twenty five. Everybody should know that budget hearings two and three are the budget hearings where we can receive questions and communications from the public um that we can use to look at the budget before it is finally adopted. Okay, every year, the same thing. We have to look at enrollment projections, that is a constant for us. And we see the ebbs and flows of that right now in the high school. We have some classes of like one sixty at the elementary, we're closer to two hundred, we'll have ten sections of kindergarten, for example. We've seen ebbs and flows in enrollment, but that really um justifies our staffing. And the staffing has to be commensurate with our enrollment. We have for the twenty four, twenty five budget, we had one hundred and three million, four hundred sixty four thousand, seven hundred twenty six dollars. Our proposed budget for twenty five, twenty six is a hundred and seven million, three hundred and twenty seven thousand, two hundred eighty nine dollars, which reflects a three point seven three budget to budget increase, which is three point eight million dollars. When you see a budget to budget increase of three point seven three, that does not correlate with an increase in taxes of three point seven three. You know, that's a uh and if anyone wants a grade eight education on what this budget is and how it affects your taxes, I am your person.
That's right.
Right, I I feel like I can explain it. Okay.
Give you a call. Did everyone hear that?
Yeah.
You're on the hook, Kelly.
Yes.
You just forwarded your phone.
So as I said, we um we are looking at programs that support student needs. And in Byram Hills, it's not only the required programs that we have, but the programs that we've developed over time to make our kids successful. Tonight, we had our science department chair here talking about our science program. We have not only a good complement of AP courses in the science classes, we also have a science research program. It's really important in our budget that we maintain programs that give kids the opportunities that they need to go on to become those scientists we heard about today. Um we always want every student to have more opportunities in K eleven than we currently have for our graduating seniors. Here we say they will have the same opportunities afforded, we always want them to have more opportunities. That doesn't mean that we fit twenty five things on a plate that should have five things. What it means is that we are looking at students today and what they need to be successful in this ever changing world. And with that comes opportunities that you may not have seen or needed in years past. For example, AI, we weren't talking about AI, well, some people were, we weren't talking about AI five years ago. Uh but now, it is very much infiltrating conversations about college acceptances. And I don't know a person who submits a resume on LinkedIn who doesn't realize that AI is looking at your resume using, right, a very specific algorithm to decide if you're going in the trash pile or the maybe pile. So, you know, important. Um and we do think our programs and services are a benchmark for success. Deb talked tonight about the success of the science department and our teachers, and we do believe in that. And that is what is guided by our budgets as well. And I encourage you to go to our website under Curriculum and Instruction and Academic Departments, especially to look at the special recognition document of our students. Um if anybody in the community ever wants to have a deep dive into what makes Byram great, you can call me and I will figure out exactly where to lead you on that website. Our students have so many accomplishments because of what we have created. District enrollment, um you will see that in two thousand twenty, we were at two thousand two hundred and sixty one. We are projected for twenty five, twenty six to be at two thousand three hundred thirty six. We're seeing a gradual incline, six, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine. You're you're just seeing the growth continuously over the course of the next couple of years. The demographer has not really been wrong, they're pretty close with what their estimations are. We also, um in my budget meetings before, I've talked about the number of communities that are being built within Byram Hills, whether it's Airport Campus or um and any one of the others. Um those are going to eventually impact our enrollment, and that's probably where you're seeing that. So you'll see a little bit of wiggle room. If you look at the blue, which is Coman Hill, at five seventy five, you're seeing a little bit of growth um in the twenty five, twenty six school year. You will see five forty seven for Wampus, uh moving to five seventy four. So you're getting a big bump bump of kids that are coming from Coman Hill to Wampus that they haven't seen before. Um take a look at Crittenen, four seventy four is going to four ninety four. And the high school, while we are going to see a decline to six ninety one, that decline is going to be followed by a sharp uphill climb once these numbers reach the high school. I think we are at the last year of a low class size, yes, I, yeah.
Coming up.
Um all programs and services, state and federally mandated programs, our athletic programs not only remain, they have been expanded. We have programs now that we are entertaining and starting to talk about piloting, like fencing, for example. These are things that we haven't talked about before. Yep, I just let something out of the bag.
What?
Do you want to?
Probably.
We have very reject extracurricular programs, right? So our budget is broken up into three components. The program at seventy two point eight percent of our budget, capital at fifteen point one percent, and administrative at twelve point one percent.
I guess just looking at.
Go ahead, Deb.
Go back for one quick second, um and it's not a next year thing, but uh sorry, go back one more. The enrollment, yeah.
Oh, enrollment. Building?
Go next one, yeah, yeah, exactly. So if you look at the high school, going out to, you know, twenty eight, twenty nine, um it was at six thirty eight. So almost a hundred is declined from now. And I guess this is again, not a next year thing, we're declining by, but but I mean, just thinking about course offerings and the ability to continue to manage what we manage now, but with a much smaller size, is something we probably wanna start thinking about.
Yeah, what we have to look at is, you know, just because you have offered X numbers of English ten does not mean that English ten is going to have that many sections anymore, right?
Right.
So when you have things like, whether it is retirees or moving people to other buildings or, you know, consolidating some programs, you need to, right? That's that's just the nature of what it is.
Yeah.
When you have enrollment sizes like that. And like you said, it's like um you have to look six steps out.
Right.
You cannot be just in the next year, right? You have to look at for the next four years until we get this enrollment up from the younger grades. What is this gonna look like? Because five years of five teachers is exactly the the delta in our budget that we need to meet, right?
Right.
I mean, and you can't add that if it's not required. Yep, go ahead, Kelly, you're on, huh?
Oh, I mean, no.
I am.
I'll slow you down. So you covered this, um but just in terms of the percentages, uh each category, program being, you know, the majority of our budget, that's your your teachers, your teacher age, your librarian, your nurses, bus drivers, everybody associated with children. That that's seventy two point eight percent, a three point nine percent increase uh for next year. Um all this information in terms of these percentages by category are available to you guys if you click on that link um in my presentation portion. Um or in my section in the board docs, so you can get these numbers. Uh just a couple of things I wanted to point out to you. You'll see an increase in athletics, for example, five point one percent. Uh Scott and Rob will be here uh the twenty fifth to go through their budget, but that really is associated with the new turf field, the additional equipment they're gonna need for that. So that's really just a one time increase, um for, I mean, you know, benches, soccer goals. Goalposts come with a field, goalposts come with a field, we're good there.
They should, it's like mats with a car.
We're good there.
But then it just rapidly declined because we won't have to maintain it like we would with grass and other things.
It should drop back.
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, for sure, yeah, yeah. Um, okay. Uh one you're gonna see in every one of these slides is increasing in benefits.
Hmm.
Seven percent for the program. We've had increases in retirement costs and health insurance specifically for these last two, three years. Um so you're gonna see that in each one of these slides, something we discussed uh last week and will continue to to get on top of in terms of.
It's very different regarding health insurance for the past three years than it was for the five preceding years.
Absolutely.
Right, where you were seeing increases of three, four, five percent. And now you're seeing increases of nine, nine point seven percent over the course of the last three years. So altogether, in three years' time, I think it's been twenty eight percent increase in health insurance that is substantially affecting a school budget. And every school district is in the same boat, whether they have the insurance companies we use or they're using Niship.
Hundred percent. Yeah, I'm sure people at home, there are increases in in their private insurance as well.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
So something definitely uh we'll we'll work on and and deal with going forward, hoping for lower rates going forward. Um the capital component, the second biggest, fifteen point one percent, really everything associated with our buildings. Um just point out here, uh people transportation, two point nine percent increase. Um that's a little over uh from last year, we're actually purchasing two buses and three vans next year. And we still have the mandate uh in two thousand twenty seven to start with electric buses. There's been some talk of a potential push of that deadline.
Oh, I wonder why.
Obviously, nothing, nothing yet uh in terms of set in stone. Uh but we are coming with a plan to to start our our switch over to electric buses uh probably before the end of the school year. Uh we teamed with NYSERTA, which is a state uh energy uh reduction authority um to get a plan for electrification of our of our buses.
So they're working, they're working on a, yeah, it's almost like a consulting project?
Which, a hundred percent, and which is covered uh by NYSERTA for free.
And then it and it includes not only buying buses, but also figuring out the electrical infrastructure.
Everything.
Oh, exactly.
It involves everything, right?
Mm-hmm.
The the infrastructure, the pulling of power, if we can maintain it, all that stuff. The sit times and wait times.
Will that be done in this this school year or?
We should have it done by the end of this year, yeah, yeah, I'm thinking, I'm hoping by the summer, I'll have it done.
Yeah, okay.
Um but you know, the state budget comes out supposedly by April first, it's been delayed. It's been delayed, you know, a couple of weeks, uh, last two years, but, uh, if something changes, you know, we'll pivot on that. Um, but we're gonna continue purchasing those buses until, until the end of, um, we're just following that replacement plan of our buses. Um, debt service debt decrease of four point seven percent is our last, next year is our last year of debt service payments. So we won't have payments, um, in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Increase of administrative, uh, program of six percent. Um, again, you'll see on the bottom there, the benefit increase around seven percent, seven point two. So that, that's kind of the theme, uh, of these increases, just based on, yeah, with the board one?
Yeah.
Yeah. He might ask that.
You didn't know you were getting seventy-eight thousand five hundred divided by seven?
We don't get paid, that's just me.
Is that our, we volunteer here?
Trying to sneak that by. Remember, you look at the percentages, eight point six sounds a lot, the full budget is seventy-eight thousand dollars. So really, that's associated with the, the budget vote. You know, we have to additionally pay the staff members additionally, uh, our election inspectors. Um, we're doing additional, uh, advertising, legal ads that we need for the, for the projects and everything. So that's where that's, that increase. Again, that's about six thousand dollars. Eight point six looks like a big number, but it's about six thousand dollars.
Miss bazooos, right?
Yeah, do, yeah, it's everything.
I just want the community to know that we get.
Yeah, there's no pay, yeah. I was gonna make a joke, we're gonna raise salaries, but I don't want somebody to actually think that was true.
We don't get paid and we do not get healthcare, so I just wanted to mention that.
It'd be a much bigger number than seventy-eight thousand dollars.
You get chocolate.
You get chocolate, yeah.
And certificates.
And self-serve, which is not today, I think.
Yeah, we're fresh out of self-serve. Um, thi- this slide hasn't changed in, since I've been here, um, that's a good thing or bad thing?
It's just becoming more and more important.
Yes, a hundred percent. Uh, our mandated costs for our retirement and, and, uh, our ERS and our teachers, um, contractual salary, health insurance, as we spoke about last week. Uh, really, uh, large expenses that we're gonna try to, uh, get a hold of. But again, to, to most extent, out of our control. This slide actually hasn't changed a lot either, uh, which is kinda sad. Um, issues coming up, you know, what stands out to me, electric bus, the conversion of electric buses, our foundation aid, whether there's, you know, a reduction in the, in the, in the future or not, not this year, thank God. Um, but going forward, any changes to the tax cap, the regional cost index, there's a lot of, been a lot of talks based on the report that came out. Um, but, uh, there was something we're gonna just have to keep an eye on and go forward with that. Just keep an eye, and hopefully that'll change next year, some of these, some of the slides. So March twenty-fifth, we'll be talking, that's the expense side, March twenty-fifth, we're talking about revenue. Um, I'm gonna give a, uh, extensive presentation on revenue and tax levy, the tax rate this year. Um, it looks like the assessed values have made significant shifts, um, as a couple of years ago, that was the case. So I wanna definitely provide that information. We're gonna see some, some large shifts in tax rates, uh, for each of our, our four towns, so. Uh, March twenty-fifth, that'll be, um, that presentation. And next, next week, you'll have, uh, special education, uh, technology, art, music. Yes, next week. Uh, and on Tim, curriculum, um, so they'll provide a little more information about their budget. Um, and, and, uh, we'll go forward with the revenue and athletics and O and M. And then our, our proposed budget on April eighth, our adoption on April twenty-second, and then the final hearing on the sixth. The budget vote on the twentieth, that's history. This presentation will be on there. If you have any questions, please feel free to give me, uh, send me an email or you can call Jen, apparently, to help you with the budget.
Yeah, well, if you want the eighth grade ver, I could, I could teach it, like I'm teaching it, yes, exactly.
So translate, yes, translate. But, uh, yeah, any other questions?
It's how I justify it in my own mind.
Okay. And, oh, before, uh, I just wanna thank Susan Palamcheck, who's here, uh, my assistant, Mary Jones. Susan's amazing, is part of the reason this school is so great and this district is so great. Thank you, her dedication.
Yeah. When I, when I was.
Closes this place every night, Susan.
Yeah, she sat with the audience when I was considering the board, which for the community is a great idea. If you're ever considering the board, sit and watch with Susan.
Susan, I think back to my time as a superintendent, and in the first year, I was blessed enough to come in on Labor Day to receive a donation.
That's right, a soccer, a soccer donation.
From a soccer, from a soccer group in town, and Susan was here. We might, I just say that, Susan was here.
Susan, Susan came in.
It's been the same ever since.
There was a pipe burst over there in my office.
Yes, thank goodness.
And if she didn't come in, this whole, everything.
But that's right, that's right, Christmas.
It, two years ago.
Christmas, yeah, just the amazing dedication.
Yep.
Amazing partner, and I wanna thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And a Byram Hills graduate.
That's true.
That's right.
Their mother works here, uh, it's the food service story, right?
He was, huh?
Unbelievable. Very dedicated, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, uh, so for unfinished business, Gina, I think we're gonna turn over to the policies. There are, looks like four second reads possible to discuss and six first reads. So do you wanna do the second reads first?
Sure.
Or however you wanna do it.
Yeah, sure, if there's any, if there's not any questions on second reads and you just wanna put it up for adoption.
Okay, any questions from the second reads? All right, so let's put up for adoption forty-three, twenty-one, forty-three, twenty-one point one, forty-three, twenty-one point two, and forty-three, twenty-one point seven.
So moved second.
All those in favor? Okay, and for the six first reads, do you wanna talk about those?
Yeah, sure, I can go through them. Um, I'm going to rather brief on the special education policies that are in between the first and the last policy. But the first one, I think, is kind of exciting for all of you, twenty-two, forty-five, which is the ex officio student member of the Board of Education, so your new teammate and, uh, member of the board. Um, this policy outlines the purpose and, uh, to include student voice and, and offer, uh, participation in school governance. So in the, in the policy, you'll see some of the key components, which is that we have at least one member, um, on the board. The, this individual student would be selected according to the procedures that the high school principal has outlined. They have attended our high school for at least one year, and they will serve one term from July one to June thirtieth. Uh, there's also some ex- exclusions that are incorporated into the policy, such as voting, attending executive sessions, access to personnel information, and we're allowed to call any meeting, so.
We'd love you to come, but you can't vote, you can't know much.
I'll pay you.
Do we value, do we value the student voice?
Yeah, you know what, there's.
Yeah, yeah. Able to give input.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
And it's a great way to learn about your civic duty.
It's a duty.
I think it's a great way. Yes, and when Mia was president of the board, you remember, she helped us with our board retreat, put together a board member handbook. We're gonna be using that as the guide to create the student-level handbook, which I think, once you know the inner workings of a board of education and how things are happening, think about each individual student. I might be a student who's really intrigued by math courses and the concept of budget and the concept of taxes and how that actually happens might be fascinating to me. I'm gonna sit here and listen to Deb Kay talk about the science department and these visits that happen. This is like a whole world that we really open up to kids, even though we, we give them all the no's, you know, you can't do this or that or the other. It's still gonna be super exciting.
So thanks to the policy committee on that one, 'cause we tweaked quite a bit in there to make it, um, the way that I, I hope it reflects your intentions. Uh, and then in terms of forty-three, twenty-one and, and the four policies that, um, follow, this is, we are now, we'll be finished with our updating of all our special education policies. Again, there really aren't any significant changes in these four particular policies, um, but rather they haven't been updated in a really long time, and it was important for us to come back to the table and to look at them.
And did that though?
Yeah, and ma- and our attorney also had looked at them. Um, if there's any questions on them, let me know, otherwise I, all right. Um, and then the last policy, eighty-one, thirteen, extreme heat condition days. Again, this is a new policy, um, for us, and this addresses, uh, extreme heat conditions in school buildings, uh, to ensure maximal health and safety for all. Within the policy, it identifies two specific temperatures, one being eighty-two degrees, in which we are obligated to measure the temperature of the room or the location in which our, our students and staff are. It's very specific in terms of being in a shaded location, three feet above the floor and, like, in the middle and the center of the area, at which time we are obligated to take, uh, put measures in, such as opening windows, I mean, things we do already, um, if we have to.
Even then, at eighty-two degrees, the windows would already be open.
Right, and even if we have to, 'cause we're fortunate enough to have a lot of, lots of spaces that are air-conditioned, so. Um, and then at eighty-eight degrees, that is the cutoff in which that space is considered no longer a safe space, and we.
And these are educational spaces.
Educational spaces, and we need to, um, evacuate or move, uh, our students and our staff to somewhere else.
Yeah, nope. Smelter, when I didn't even have air conditioning in my home, but I went to my school.
Um, and then just finally, that we, we include the information into our emergency plans and make sure that, um, it reflects this particular policy. Any questions on that policy?
Any questions for Gina? Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Gina, thank you. So I think we need to have a, a vote to a, adopt the first read of the six policies that Gina just discussed, so. All in favor? Uh, we don't have to name them, 'cause Gina just named them.
Yep.
Right. I know a lot of them. Which is, again, thank you to the policy committee.
That's worked really hard.
Thank you, thank you to the policy committee.
Uh, there is no new business that I see on the agenda, so next we'll go to staff reports and turn it over to you, Dr. Lamia.
All right, so, um, I have had, I have some very exciting highlights. Um, this, my highlights tonight are going to be presented via Bobcat News. I had the opportunity to spend the day with Tommy Mendoza and Luca Merrick. Um, they, as part of the BHF, became superintendents of the day. And if there's anything I know how to do, it's to spend a day with two boys, as I have raised my two old sons. It really, I mean, it, it was significantly more fun for me, maybe, than it was for them. But we, we had such a great day, and they are here. They went into our film studio with Brian Melso, who's amazing, and we have a video to show you. Hi, I'm Dr. Lamia, here with Bobcat News today with my co-hosts.
Hi, I'm Tommy Mendoza.
And I'm Luca Merrick.
On Monday, February twenty-fourth, Coman Hill students got creative by dressing up and diving into a series of fun activities to celebrate one hundred days of school.
Congratulations to Ava Abisport, who competed at the prestigious Harvard National High School Invitational Forensics Tournament as a member of the American Debate League travel team. Ava earned this honor through her outstanding performance in ADL competitions, a nonprofit organization dedicated to developing students' debating and public speaking skills. Congrats.
Congratulations to Zoe, Andrew, Olivia, Serena, and Erin for advancing to finalist status in the twenty-twenty-five National Merit Scholarship Program. As finalists, they are now eligible to compete for a six thousand eight hundred seventy scholarships worth twenty-six million dollars. That's a lot of money. To have their work exhibited in the Katona Museum of Arts Young Artists exhibit. Great job, artists.
Additionally, senior Eve Nepo's ceramic piece, which I love, called American Magic, has been handpicked for this year's annual national K to twelve ceramic exhibition. Congratulations to our Byram Hills High School Global Scholars Year Two students, who successfully pitched their action plans for funding at the Changemaker Project's Global Pitch Event on Sunday, February ninth. Many teams received funding from sponsoring donors. Della and Angelina's project, Health Heroes, won the People's Choice Award for their work supporting the development of a medical clinic in Uganda. Other teams selected as top-ten projects included Avni's Climate Changer, Max and Ava's Pause With A Cause, Taylor and Danny's Silent No More, and Amelia's Educating Teachers. The Year Two teams will now put their action plans into motion and present the result of their work at the Changemaker Project Impact Event, June first, and Global Scholars Showcase on May twenty-ninth.
Come see Chicago, it's gonna be a really great show. March sixth at seven PM, March seventh at seven PM, and March eighth at two and seven PM at Byram Hills High School.
Thank you for watching, and go Bobcats.
Go Bobcats.
Go Bobcats.
We must have watched out. With my co-hosts, Tommy Mendoza.
Hi.
And Luca Merrick.
Hello.
I need to donate my salary from that day because that was so much. They were like that all day, all day.
I think, I think it seems great, what crazy night.
They're in the same grade, yeah, it's fourth grade.
So their parents bid on this at the BHF gala?
They are, what?
Their parents bid on this.
They are amazing. They started the day with Dave Mack talking about the zero period. They, they had incredible input about the zero period and the communication to parents and the fact that if you do a zero period, one thing you should be able to tell parents is if you have a musically-inclined student, that student might be able to take two instruments now, right? They can do one in the zero period and they can do one in the other. I mean, the, the thoughts, the processes, they went to visit Jen Rau. Jen Rau, thank you so much. Jen, like, thought she had the greatest gift in having these two kids who were in her second-grade class when they were second graders. They went back, they helped her with Legos, they taught a lesson with her, they worked with her there for a while. Um, we went to Crittenen, we met with Kim Lappel, we worked in the high school. They walked into the, um, to the site of what their high school is going to be, the renovation project. Uh, they worked, I, I mean, I was exhausted by the end of the day. We did so many things, and because you've now met their personalities, which are so dynamic, after we left the pizza party in my office and we were going to the high school, of course, we have to stop. We have to go in the press box and take pictures. They go out to the fifty-yard line, take more pictures. I mean, they were filled with energy and phenomenal. So I wanna thank both students for all the input that they gave to all the administrators and the teachers that we met, um, for the great day had with a superintendent who just enjoyed their company to the hilt. I can't imagine how, what amazing things these two are gonna do. If they had a day, like, they wowed me, so I can't imagine who you're going to become, um, and remain the nice people that you are. So it was really, really fun. All right, we have our HCC Mathletes. These, these all happened after the filming, uh, late last week, right? So HCC Mathletes advanced to the state competition. So we have eighth grader Ananya, we have sixth grader Adveet and Anuve, and eighth grader Kishav. Outstanding performance in Westchester Putnan Chapter of Math Counts. They're in the top three in the county, advanced to New York State Competition, and will represent us in Albany on March first. Math Counts is a national program. It gives students in the middle school an opportunity to compete along with live contests, along with their peers. Super great. Um, Science Olympiad Team Tournament, uh, they secured eighth place out of twenty-one schools in Lower Hudson Regional Tournament. And this highlights the team's dedication and hard work. They have won a school trophy. The Lower Hudson Regional Tournament, which was held at Scarsdale Middle School, is a competitive event. Thirty-nine teams, twenty-one schools across three counties, and HCC brought twenty-nine students on two teams. And while the A-teams finished, brought us close to a state qualifying spot reserved for the top six schools, both A and B teams made impressive high ranks, a testament to their commitment and preparation. That is pretty amazing to have that many kids at the middle school. HCC Mathletes, here we go, they advanced to state champions. Uh, we had A-team for Optics, Entomology, Ecology, Rhodes Scholar Experimental Design, and B-team for Potions and Poisons, and CodeBusters, super fun.
Rhodes Scholar, R, R O A D.
Oh, yeah, R O A D Scholar, thank you. Wow, this was a lot of fun. This picture was taken by Lori Kaner, uh, the varsity.
I'll give it to Jessica, um, Bond, she sent it to me.
She sent it to you? Varsity basketball section one champions. And, um, Zach, I just wanna say thank you for the slam dunk. Like, every time.
Oh, every time, it's so exciting.
Oh, it's so exciting, the energy, I mean, like, to look, if you, if he could just have recorded everyone's reaction when he slammed dunks, so that he could watch it over and over for all of eternity, it's pretty amazing. Um, but the team together was fantastic. I appreciate our students, who were the spectators, always respectful, always doing the right thing. Um, we brought out a lot of people to a game like this, a lot of people in the community who don't have kids on the team. Um, our principal, high school principal, was there with his father, his father-in-law, and his two kids, like this. This means the world to us as a community, so congratulations to our boys. And we look forward to seeing you Friday night at County Center at seven-thirty. Go Bobcats. Go Bobcats. Yes, that's it.
All right, Tim.
Uh, no, nothing new, that, that's it for me.
Ah. Nothing, all right, so, uh, any reports from the board?
Um, Mia said that she had gone to the PTSA meeting, um, I, was I?
Yes, yeah, so the PTSA, um, there, she included something in a, in a group email or something to the board about a PTSA event coming up, and wanted to know if PTSA, if board members could attend with the PTSA. It's sort of, I think, a trivia, a trivia night, um, that they're doing.
Trivia night, yeah.
Right.
Uh, the PTSA also on Sunday, March eighth, is doing, um, bingo games, and some of our board members are gonna be there. I think it's the, is that the twenty-third? Is it the twenty-third?
I think that's the twenty-third.
Oh, yeah, March eighth is the Bobcats, I mean, it's the Wizards.
Yeah, March, 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 you can.
Sorry, Wizards, yeah, that's the other thing. Wizards, we have Wizards coming up this weekend. Um, on Sunday, we have twenty-nine faculty and staff members who are gonna be. Um, on Sunday, we have twenty-nine faculty and staff members who are gonna be playing in the Wizards game. I really do need to talk to Zach because I'm the assistant coach, and then he can come. Um, I will have two assistant coaches with me on that day for the BHEF, and you can look forward to seeing highlights on that, we'll leave you back.
Great.
That's it.
Excellent, uh, any communications to the board? Anyone? No, okay, uh, let's approve the, or a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting, February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five. All those in favor?
So moved.
Anyone abstain?
Love staying.
Okay, um, do we all need all in favor?
Do you need a second, right?
Do you need a second?
I'll take a second.
All in favor? Great, thank you, and a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, good night, Byram Hills.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, and thank you to the science department for all the work on tri-states and Deb for protecting us tonight.
Yes. Yeah, that was very thorough.
So thank you.
Excellent.